Order here on April 21st, 2020. This is our work session being handled remotely today. It is it is 9:01. Let's do a roll here. Make sure people can be heard. Natasha, are you on? Can you hear? Haven't seen Natasha yet. What about Mayor Pro-Tam Daya? You here?
I'm here.
Hey, what about Piorintaria?
Here, present.
Hey, Greg Sarr?
Here.
What about Ann Kitchen?
I'm here.
Okay, Jimmy?
Here.
Is Councilman Poole, Leslie here?
I'm here, but I don't think you can see me. It looks like the video is spinning. Is that correct? Can you guys see my thumbnail?
I cannot.
It was it was up a minute ago. I continue to have problems with connection here. But we don't wait for me. I'm here. Just because you don't see me doesn't mean I'm not here.
Paige, you here?
I am here. Is my audio good?
Your audio is good. Kathy?
Present.
And Allison?
I'm here.
Okay, so we have everybody except for Natasha.
I'm here.
Okay, good. Then we're all here. With that, we'll start today. We're going to have a briefing on the virus. And we're going to do three polled items. Kathy has added a polled item number 67. So it's 38, 67, and 68. And then we'll go into executive session to discuss the Shady Hollow mud and any items related to the virus potentially. All right, so let's go ahead with the briefing on the virus. A lot of people, manager on staff, both in the city and the county, working really hard and putting in really long hours. It's been impressive to watch that emergency team in operation. And now we have, you know, staff here at all levels, both in the city and county. Just wanted to say we really appreciate it. Do you want to kick us off on the briefing?
That'd be great. Thank you, Mayor, for that. And good morning, Mayor, Council. We're going to start out this work session with the briefing on the COVID-19 response. And as the mayor mentioned, this is an all hands on deck effort. We have seen incredible collaboration and partnership and commitments from not only our city employees, but from out throughout our community. We know that it's going to take everyone working together to effectively respond to this pandemic. And I've just been incredibly impressed with how we have all come together to make sure that we are keeping our community safe. The briefing this morning will consist of four key presenters. And then we'll obviously have a lot of time for question and answer. But I'm going to first turn it over to our wonderful Director of Public Health, Stephanie Hayden. Then we'll hear from our interim Health Authority, Mark Eschott. We'll also hear from Juan Ortiz, our Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Management. And then finally, we'll have Bree Franco, our Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, provide an overview of some of the budget implications that are coming from the federal level. So with that, I hope Stephanie is on the phone, and I want to pass it over to her to kick this off. Director, you may have to unmute if you're you can't hear you quite yet.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yeah, but your mouth full.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
We can.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good morning. Good morning. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide an update. As far as our cases that we have, we have a total of 1,225 cases. And we have 293 that have recovered. Our Austin Public Health staff are continuing to work at the Emergency Operations Center to ensure that continuity of public health services. We are we've made some changes to the the public health branch to be able to separate out the public health and medical operations. And our staff are continuing to work at the department level Operations Center. And we're continuing to coordinate and staff the medical hotline. Our epidemiologists and surveillance staff are conducting contact tracing for all positive cases within Travis County. And we have added additional Austin Public Health staff for that contact tracing. Staff are working seven days a week to follow up with clients that test positive to determine their contacts. We have added some more case investigators that speak Spanish. We are partnering with Dale Medical School and Community Care. Dale is working on their patients that test that test positive with them. And then Community Care is working with following up with their patients. We have agreements with Dale Medical and Community Care to operate in this space. And we would like to publicly acknowledge and thank them. As we move forward with the deployment of the sales force applications or the public assessment and for testing, we anticipate that we'll be increasing in the community testing site. Community Care, some of our partners have stepped in more are providing more testing. Community Care is providing testing in the Eastern Crescent five days a week. And they are at their Hancock site five days a week. They are also going to open up some of their clinics in the Eastern Crescent. People's Community Clinic is providing testing a few days a week as well. As we continue to move through this response, we are going to make some small changes and add, as we did early on, to the point of testing, a couple of small incident command areas around our homeless services and as and our nursing homes. What we have determined is is once we when we when the areas continue to grow and need a little bit more structure. And then we also noticed that we need to add an additional co-chair to the task force. And that way, we can add a little bit more bench depth. So we will be doing that effective this week for homelessness as well as our nursing homes. The Social Services Branch continues to provide services and making sure that we are working with our vulnerable populations and making sure that we have a an equity lens. And our Community Services area, which includes our childcare, our behavioral health, and our food access. We are continuing to provide food access to the various populations in our community. What we have really started to really make sure that we focus on as far as homelessness is concerned is we've continued to work with the Central Texas Food Bank to deliver shelf stable foods. We are continuing to distribute food from the convention center. And we, as far as our hygiene resources and support for unsheltered individuals, we have five recreation centers that have showers, restroom availability, and 20 plus sites that have porta potties and hand washing. The other one foundation has a mobile hygiene truck operating seven days a week. And we are working to get additional mobile showers so they will be operational across the city. We have an interactive map of hygiene sites that's available. We're continuing to work with our partners, including Echo. And there is a daily call Monday, Wednesday, and Friday with a homeless service provider. We have our isolation and quarantine and protective lodges through the isolation facility and the protective lodging sites for our homeless people. With the motel conversion on the 13th, the city issued a housing first request for qualification statement solicitation to establish a contract with one or more qualified nonprofit of government entities. So staff are continuing to, in the midst of the COVID response, staff are continuing to work on the the hotel strategy. Someone missed their phone. Thank you. As far as our our early childhood, our folks are continuing to to work with other partners across the city and their childcare task force. We have memberships from childcare regulatory, Health and Human Services Commission, Travis County, Workforce Solutions, Capital Area, United Way, SO, Austin, Vamos. And the Equity Office is assisting us. One of the things that you may have seen is there's a childcare flyer going around for childcare for essential workers. And that is for childcare. And it has a sliding scale fee that's attached to that. Other essential services, I will say that the consultants, the homeless consultants, are continuing to provide guidance to our team as we are implementing the implementing the school, the school process, the shelters, and people that are unsheltered. They are providing information and examples of strong approaches from other communities. And they're working with the city and partners to develop our overarching collaborative response plan. Our community as a department, our communal disease, we continue to provide sexual health. Our environmental health sectors continue to work with the food establishments. And our youth services, as well as our neighborhood center services, are continuing to provide those services. That concludes my report for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hayden. And I think unless there's a pressing question, we'll hold off on the questions until we hear from Dr. Eschott and then from Juan Ortiz. And then we'll pause there, just like we had before, to talk about the overall health response. So, Dr. Eschott, if you're on the phone, please, you're up next.
Thank you, Spencer. And I will send over some slides to council so that that you can see graphically what I'm talking about. Again, Mark Eschott, interim Health Authority for the City of Austin and Travis County. Stephanie mentioned the the new case number, so I won't go through that again. When we look at ethnicity regarding the confirmed cases, it's 73% white, 10% black. Other is 8% unknown, 5%. Age is 4%. Ethnicity, non-Hispanic 54%, Hispanic 42%, with 4% unknown. Now, when we look at the age breakdown as well, we see that individuals in the 40 to 49 and 50 to 59 age group are starting to catch up with with those in the 20 to 29 age group. So we continue to see increases in other in other age ranges beyond that initial 20 to 29 and 30 to 39, which was the focus of our initial outbreak. We have seen relatively low numbers in the 70 to 79 and 80 plus age group, which which is good. And we hope to continue that with with further computing efforts as we look to protect our more vulnerable population. When we look at at a couple of things, it's important to monitor several aspects, not only the cumulative cases, but also the recovered cases, as Stephanie said. That number continues to grow up, up to 293 as of yesterday. And we have many more individuals who are now in the timeframe for recovery. So we certainly hope to add more substantial numbers to that this week. We're hopeful that in the in the coming week, we will be able to provide also information on the dashboard regarding current cases or active cases as opposed to just total cumulative numbers, which may give a more accurate description of of those individuals who are still potentially infectious in the community. Certainly, the further we get along, the more recovered individuals we have and the less ongoing threat of infection from from those individuals who have recovered. Additionally, I have a display that I will share with you all regarding the the onset of cases, which tells us that a little bit different, you know, the the spread of disease and when that happened. As I have discussed before, when we diagnose somebody, that's probably around a week after or 10 days after that individual, you know, when that individual became sick and probably a week after, even another week after that individual was exposed. So this this onset graph, what we call the Epi curve, gives us a better indication of when those individuals became sick and and will be helpful for understanding when that exposure likely was more likely to have happened. Additionally, when we talk about the new cases by week, we've heard lots of discussion about needing two weeks of declining cases. And it's important to understand that right now at this stage, last week, we had increasing number of cases compared to the seven days before that. So we look at Sunday to Saturday weeks, starting back on on 3/15. That that first week, we had 70 new cases, followed by 106 new cases the week starting the 22nd of March. The the 29th of March that week had 281 cases, then 284 the week of of April the 5th. And the week starting last Sunday, the 12th, was 353 cases. Now, again, the the number of cases are going up, and to some extent, we expect that because our testing is going up. Some of you may have seen in the in the media that Travis County has the second highest rate of diagnosis diagnosed case per capita. But there's a caveat with that, and that has to do with the per capita rate of testing in various metropolitan counties across the state. To give you some better perspective on that, when we look at El Paso County, the the rates per 1,000 of testing is 2.6. That rate in Bear County is 3.8. In Tarrant, in Harris County, that's 4.0. In Dallas, that's 5.0. And in Travis County, that's 6.6 per 1,000. So still, you know, substantial substantially increased testing per capita here in Travis County as compared to the other major metropolitan counties across Texas. So that is another reason why why Travis County is diagnosing more cases. It's more likely to be a function of the testing versus other factors. Again, you know, we will track this information. This information is based upon the the State Department of State Health Services data from the 13th. They have not updated that this week, but as soon as that's updated, we will continue to provide that information. The other important thing to remember is the the rate of positivity of the testing. So when we look at cities like like Houston and Dallas, the rate of positivity is on the range of 18% of the tests are positive. Ours is hovering between 10 to 12%. So that lower rate of positivity indicates generally a better rate of testing. So we'll continue to track that. We are hopeful that in the coming weeks, we'll be able to report similar to what we do with with influenza, the the positive rate for that week to give us an idea of how we're doing on a longitudinal basis rather than a cumulative basis. Something else I want to talk about today, and that's what's going on with our with our nursing homes. As you saw last night in in a press release, we have had 96 nursing home, long-term care facility residents who have tested positive for COVID-19. And that includes 15 individuals who died in in those facilities. Additionally, around 67 staff have been infected as well. And I say around 67, the way we track that data, if a if an individual working in a nursing home works at multiple nursing homes, their positive will show up at all the nursing homes based upon the the cluster investigations. So some individuals may be counted more than once. Additionally, if if a worker is is exposed at a Travis County facility but live in a different jurisdiction, those individuals will not be included in those numbers because it's 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 somebody else's case. So we'll continue to refine those numbers and and report those numbers. In response to the this this growing issue in our nursing homes, as you recall, early on, very early, right after the the initial disaster declaration, we moved to try to protect our our nursing facilities. We knew that they were going to be vulnerable based upon a number of factors. And and, you know, we were hopeful that having that screening and other mitigation strategies that that we implemented early, securing access, limiting visitation, and and screening those healthcare workers and and visitors and staff was going to be good enough. That's clearly not not the case. So we took additional measures yesterday to enhance these control orders, which require a number of different additions. Some of that caught by some of the orders from the governor's office. It brings together some of the the newer orders from from the the mayor and the judge. And also adds some additional things, such as staff and patients may be compelled to to undergo testing if there's an outbreak at the facility. If a facility has two or more patients who are infected, they are going to be restricted from taking in new patients in the facility. They'll also be restricted from having patients return to the facility until that outbreak is under control. Additionally, one other thing that that is a as a homegrown intervention that we are currently working on is deployment of strike teams to these facilities who are experiencing outbreaks. One of the things that's become very clear to us is that that advice alone is is not not helping, not helping as much as it needs to help. You know, we've had our nursing home task force, they've been engaged with facilities. We've created guidance for those facilities. We shared other guidance from CDC and HHSC for those facilities. When we have an outbreak, the state comes in and and does a review and makes further recommendations. But recommendations are not strong enough. What we're what we're seeing in these facilities who are chronically understaffed is that when COVID-19 hits, the the demand from the patients goes up because they are sicker. And in addition to that, we have individuals who are workers, both healthcare workers and support staff who are sick. So that ratio, that that staff to to resident ratio continues the imbalance, and it worsens that imbalance. And the all the advice is not good enough. They need resources. They need people. They need PPE. They need equipment. And that's where these strike forces come in. We've done a state request for four strike forces to go to our our top facilities that are experiencing outbreaks, so we can give them additional people, additional resources, and we can try to more aggressively control these these outbreaks. In addition to that, we've made a recommendation to the state that across the state, they improve the the staff to resident ratios in these facilities. We have to strengthen the resources in these facilities. I can tell you that on a regular basis, over the past many decades, it's challenging to control infection in these facilities. It's challenging to control flu outbreaks. It's challenging to to control gastrointestinal virus outbreaks. It's challenging because they are understaffed, because they are underfunded. So if we want to be serious about about really reinforcing those who are most at risk, we've got to to have the state and the federal government intervene to really strengthen those resources, strengthen those defenses, so that we can get on top of of this issue and and hopefully prevent further spread and unnecessary deaths in these facilities. So those are those are unmet needs, and we're hoping that these interventions, these requests to the state, are are going to be filled and and that we that we look at deploying those assets statewide. In the interim, we are contracting with individuals locally to provide additional support to those facilities, and we expect that to happen begin happening this week. Additionally, as Stephanie mentioned, we're transitioning to a a public enrollment of of testing. So we've talked before about the the need and the potential barriers between people who want and need to get tested and actually getting that test. So what we're rolling out is a a system based on a platform called Salesforce. Since we started developing this, the entire state of Massachusetts and the entire state of Maryland are using this platform now for this enrollment and testing. So basically, what will happen is people will go to our COVID-19 website. They can create a login. They can enter their symptoms, enter their concerns, and it will make a determination if if individuals need to be tested. If they need to be tested, it will schedule testing for them. Right now, we'll just include our Austin Public Health drive-through site. But what we're really looking for is is crowdsourcing of testing. So what I mean by that is we want to bring in other partners that can plug into that. So, for instance, Community Care, or Dell Children's, or even CVS, or Walgreens, or private physician's office can plug into that platform. So if you go in and you enter your symptoms and it it says you need a test, then it will pull up your entire list of options within your area, similar to if you're searching for a a Walgreens or a Target or something like that. It will allow them to select a site. It will allow them to select a time and a date. It will schedule them. After that, it will send them a QR code via text and email. Then it'll take that QR code to the site. They'll scan it in. It will generate labels for the 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 test. The swab will be collected. The QR code goes on the on the swab kit. It gets sent off to the lab. As soon as the lab processes that test, the QR code gets scanned and again, the individual gets an alert saying that their test results are back, and they need to log in to get those test results. So it's very, very quick. It provides the the results much quicker than our current system, which relies on a fax machine being sent to us and then and then the phone call. The other thing it does is it starts to semi-automate the the epidemiological investigation and the contact tracing. So instead of waiting on somebody to call, it will start to ask questions at individual who's positive, which will initiate that that process. It will initiate the contact tracing. And it allows us for much more scalability than depending on individuals calling those who are positive and asking the questions in person. We've additionally made the recommendation to the state that they take this platform and and make it statewide. The challenge is, you know, we have many metropolitan areas like ours where the surrounding counties may not have as many public health resources. They may not have the capacity to scale up that contact tracing piece. And having a statewide system such as this will be very helpful, particularly when the majority of counties and the states do not have their own local health department. A solution like this statewide will help us gain control as a state and maintain control as a state. That concludes my report, and I'll pass it on next to Juan, and we'll take questions after.
Thank you, Dr. Esq. Director Ortiz, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity to give you an update from the Emergency Operations Center on the activities, just like Director Stephanie Hayden and Dr. Mark Esq. indicated. There's been a lot of activity for the last couple of months, working on making sure that our citizens are protected and taken care of. A lot of the activities that are being coordinated from the Emergency Operations Center are to support all the different city departments, specifically our Public Health Department and Dr. Esq. with the missions that they are carrying out. So I'm just going to expand on some of the things that they've indicated. First, let me give you an update. The federal disaster declaration was issued on March 25th for Texas, and we are participating with the state of Texas on attending the applicant briefings, and we have submitted the paperwork required to start the request for public assistance that was completed earlier this month. To date, the cost estimate is approximately $6 million. This excludes the hotel leases. The estimate is provided to the state on a weekly basis. It is collected by the different city departments every Thursday, and we submit it to the state on Friday. This is part of our disaster summary outline. The public assistance will provide for a seventy-five, twenty-five cost share of eligible costs, which include overtime, emergency medical care, and emergency response. And there is a process that we're exploring for an expedited payment, which can be requested. Within the finance section, we have brought in some consultants to kind of help us make sure that as we move forward with this very unique, first-of-the-time disaster response from our city, make sure that we have the right systems in place. So the consultant we brought in was Hagerty, and they are helping us specifically in the areas of logistics and finance to ensure that we have the right systems in place and make whatever necessary changes to ensure that we are documenting our costs and be able to report it in a timely manner to maximize our reimbursement process. In addition to that, let me just talk about, our biggest effort is to make sure that we have the right framework to support not only the test sites, the isolation facilities, the protective lodging and alternate care side planning efforts to ensure that we're able to scale up and scale down depending on the current situation. For the last couple of weeks, we've been focusing primarily on making sure that we have the right, that we identify sources and supplies for personal protective equipment, and our logistic department is reporting that we are meeting all of those needs for the immediate future. So I think we've done a great job in making sure that we have PPE available to our personnel as of today. We are receiving additional face covers that we will be distributing to the different city and county departments and community partners to look at making sure that those face covers are utilized in order to protect the higher-defined personal protective equipment like N95 masks for those operations that require a higher level of protection. We are supporting the isolation facilities. We have one that is being utilized, and we also are looking, making sure that we have a second one identified and making sure that from a logistical standpoint, we are ready in the event that we need to expand to a second isolation facility. We're continuing our plans to identify an alternate care site location and making sure that we have the proper contracts and agreements for that, and looking at the plans of making sure that we know how to operate in such an environment and identify the necessary resources to make sure that we have an alternate care site in the event that the COVID-19 response requires us to activate the alternate care site. Again, as we already reported, we're providing services at the Protection Pro Lodge, which is established to support our persons experiencing homelessness, and we're continuing to work with the Cataract, which is the Capital Area Trauma Regional Advisory Committee. They are supporting a twenty-nine county region, but we are working very closely with them to ensure that not only the first responders and medical systems in Austin and Travis County, but as well as the twenty-nine county are able to have PPE resources that they are receiving through the Cataract and then distribute them out to the different locations. Specifically, what we're doing is we are sharing a location at the Travis County Expo Center where we have established what's called a resource staging area, where all the resources are collected, and then from there, based on our priorities, are distributed to support the needs throughout our community. And that is basically the end of my report. The last thing I would like to say is that it's been a police work team with everybody in our communities. We get constant calls on a daily basis for offers of assistance. We want to take every offer of assistance, but we need to make sure that we maximize our effort to make sure that we meet the offer of assistance at the right time.
Thank you, Juan, for that briefing. And again, just the work that you and your team, Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden, not only the professional leadership that you provide, but then the team behind you and supporting you, we're just so honored to have incredible public servants that support these efforts. So with that, Mayor and Council, I'll pause because I know that there's going to be a lot of discussion about those briefings that you heard, and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, for facilitating that discussion.
Let's begin with the Mayor of Pro Tem, Garza.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of questions. First, for Stephanie, I want to thank Director Hayden. I saw the memo yesterday, and it was great to see how quickly we're rolling out funds for the RISE fund and the organizations that that money is going to for this first phase, specifically just because I want the public to be able to know how they can access those funds. And so, is 211 the single intake, or do people reach out to those organizations individually, or is it both of those?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Actually, we've set it up two ways. We've set it up in 211. If an individual calls and would like information about financial assistance, all of these agencies will pop up in that screen, and they can provide that information. We have also, the agencies directly will be ready to provide, to start receiving calls by this Friday. So they can contact the agencies directly. And as you said in the press release, it's the Asian Family Support Services, and they are going to receive a million-dollar grant. The Austin Area Urban League is going to receive $500,000. Catholic Charities is going to receive 1.6 million. El Blaine San Marantano is going to receive $500,000. And the Family Independence Initiative is going to be working with the Equity Office, and they're going to receive $2 million.
That's great, thank you. And then, so is that the Equity Office, that's the $2 million? That was my next question, I think you just answered it. It's just to one organization, is that right?
Yeah, and what they're going to do is they're going to be the main agency and conduit. They are going to work with some of the smaller agencies, and they will have MOUs with the smaller agencies to be able to provide those transfers to them, those APH transfers.
Okay. And then the second phase, is that all going through APH service providers, or will some of that go to the Equity Office as well?
So the second phase, we've opened it up to a process. Because in the resolution, there's language that does say, you know, you can be an Austin Public Health current provider or emergency contract. And so we opened that process up this past Wednesday. And so if folks are interested in, you know, applying for that, they can go to that RISE funding at austin texas.gov, and there's a little short application. As of today, we have received twenty applications have been submitted, and staff have been working with those as they are coming in. We are really, really wanting to make sure, as we're, you know, looking at the target populations, we want to make sure that we have a pretty robust response where we are picking up all of the target populations that were mentioned in the resolution. And then there are a couple of other populations that we feel like are important. So for example, individuals with disabilities were not mentioned, people that have been previously incarcerated, on parole, and their families were not mentioned. And so we want to make sure to be able to pick up those populations with this process.
All right, thank you. Thank you for all that work. I just have two more questions, one for Dr. Esq., and then I guess a general one. For Dr. Esq., I wanted to ask about, what I'm seeing is, I'm getting questions because my district is one of the outer-line ones that is close to, you know, places like Lockhart, et cetera, about private testing and these private testing places kind of popping up in other counties. And I saw one that it was, I think, $160 to $350 to get tested, and they did not take private health insurance. And so, you know, there's a concern, I read a story in The Tribune last night about an issue Laredo had in buying $500,000 worth of testing, and turns out they weren't FDA-approved tests. And so I've gotten a few questions from constituents about that private testing. And I know we don't want to look like we're endorsing any private company, but is there a way for people to, if they choose to travel to another county, to use one of these private to know that these are legitimate testing companies?
That's a great question, and I'm glad you brought it up because I think there's a great deal of fraud going on right now. I think the community should be very wary regarding the antibody testing that's currently being successfully marketed across the state of Texas. These antibody tests are not FDA-approved, and they are not accurate. You know, many of these tests are being shipped from China in bulk. These companies are only accepting cash for these test kits, and they are virtually useless at this stage. So these IgM and IgG tests are being offered, and they're, you know, I think they're trying to fill a gap. People are concerned they want to be tested. So they're offering a test that doesn't tell you if you're sick right now, it doesn't tell you if you can expose others, and if it tells you that the IgG or IgM are positive, it could be from coronavirus in the past, or it could be from a number of other coronaviruses. In fact, a lot of these tests have substantial cross-reactivity with five other extremely common coronaviruses. So right now, the antibody testing, particularly those that are not FDA-approved, are useless, and people should not spend the money. We have contacted DSHS, and I really think that this is an issue that the Attorney General's Office needs to aggressively address and ensure that people aren't being scammed out of significant money. You know, there are some circumstances that these may be used in an academic setting for research purposes, which is a reasonable way to do that. As we see better tests come out, and they are coming out, that are more accurate, then they may be a more reasonable thing to do or to use. But they're not useful for determining if people are sick or not right now. The IgG testing, for instance, is the one that indicates longer-term immunity. The IgM, or immediate, is what the body releases when there's an initial reaction to an infection. It's important that when they're getting results back, that they are results back only for COVID-19 and not for a host of other coronaviruses. In the circumstances, once these better IgG tests are available, in the circumstances where somebody had an illness in February or March, or even back in January when testing wasn't readily available, and they think they might have had COVID-19, and they want to find out if they had a past exposure that's more than two weeks in the past, that may be a useful test for folks. That test may be useful to run in emergency departments as an additional test to do some community surveillance. But right now, those tests are not at all useful for determining whether somebody's sick right now, whether or not they're infectious right now. So we'd strongly encourage folks to not utilize that testing and rely on the PCR test or nasal swab test to determine if they have the infection or not.
Okay, thank you for that. And if that kind of information is not on the COVID-19 page right now, I would encourage us to put just, you know, maybe just something to the effect for people to be, you know, on the alert for fraud-type of issues in that testing. And then last question is just general, I don't know if it's for the mayor, it might be for the mayor. So the governor has put, and I don't know if this is an executive session question, the governor has, you know, said that there's this retail to go, I think, I don't know if it starts tomorrow or when it starts, which it's in conflict with our stay-at-home orders and what is defined as essential business. And so that's another question I've gotten from folks is, how do we respond to concerns about that conflict? And what should they, you know, that's the main question. There seems to be a conflict in our stay-at-home orders and what the governor is now doing.
This is not dissimilar to when the county judge and I issued orders that said there Sounds like we're having technical problems.
Did we lose the mayor's audio?
Yeah, I can't hear anything. I could, must have lost him.
Could somebody let the mayor know that some of us can't hear him, please? He dropped out about thirty seconds ago.
We're here.
I can't hear him either.
Council members, if you can hear us, we're working on the issue. Sorry about that.
I've lost video for him and audio, and for several others, lost video.
This is so much fun.
Can I, can you hear me, this council member, Kathy Chauva?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, can hear you.
Yeah.
Can't hear Steve.
I have lost the mayor, and I just wanted to say my video throughout the day on all of these meetings goes in and out. and out. And so I think that is a band, I think it's a bandwidth issue at your...
I keep getting, yeah, and, and I get notices from the WebEx application saying that there's not sufficient bandwidth for how we're using this.
Right. Sometimes I, sometimes I get those, sometimes I just lose you all. Like today, I can't see any of you.
Yeah. I don't think he realizes we can't hear him.
I texted him.
Can anybody?
I just texted him.
I just saw Paige jump up and say something, but I can't hear her either. Maybe they're just talking to each other.
Want to text Cory and see?
Hey, guys, we're working on getting the mayor back online. We're gonna have him call in. Just give us, uh, a moment.
Okay.
Thank you. Can't hear Paige either. Somebody let Paige know we can't hear her.
Thank you. We're working on it. Um, we, uh, we can hear you. It looks like some, looks like these issues are clearing up at the moment and people are showing back up. Just give us one moment.
Thank you.
Everybody's coming back.
Oh, now we can hear you.
Are we back?
We went to this weird place where it was just me and Leslie and Paige. Uh, sit here and talk to each other.
I, I couldn't hear you at all.
I could see...
Steve. Um, I, yeah, we could see you. I couldn't hear Paige either.
But in any event, Dorothy and I've come back home now because I can see you.
Yes, our, clicking our red slippers.
I don't know how far, did you hear any of my, my response to your question?
You, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You, you cut out right when you said this is not dissimilar to when we did the construction thing and then you cut out.
Okay. It's not dissimilar to that, uh, where we didn't change our order. We just issued patents, uh, that recognize that the, that the governor, that we weren't going to challenge the governor's preemption on that issue. And, and we're not going to challenge the governor's preemption on this issue because the three things that he's done are things that make sense to us. Uh, what he's doing in parks, we're doing in parks, what he's doing with medical procedures is things that we were thinking about doing ourselves. Uh, and then the, uh, to go shopping, uh, we, our advice from, uh, Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden, as well as Dell Medical School and the modeler, uh, is that, uh, that, that may be an appropriate thing to do and to see and watch how that happens, as long as people aren't going into stores and the like. Um, depending on what happens at the next round, uh, we'll, we'll have to, to evaluate that. The good thing is, is that as the governor's doing that, he has a fourth strike for two of those people are with the University of Texas and two of the people that are advising us as well. So we know that we're hearing the same thing that the governor's offices are.
So if people ask, the stay at home orders are still in place till May 8th with the exceptions of those three things that the mayor, I mean, I'm sorry, the governor, um, made exceptions for.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Our understanding is that we're allowed to issue orders so long as they are not inconsistent. The governor recognizes we're allowed to issue orders so long as our orders are not inconsistent with this. That's member Kitchen.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a number of questions, um, for Dr. Esq. and Director Hayden, um, related to the, uh, nursing facilities. And let me just say first, uh, I really appreciate, and, um, you know, the public appreciates the recent actions that you all are taking to, uh, provide for greater protections for elderly folks living in these facilities. So I have a couple of questions there. The first one is related to the access to PPEs. Um, I'm, I'm wanting to understand a couple of things, um, you know, are, as you mentioned, our nursing facilities have an infection control, um, protocols that they've used in the past and those need to be, um, those need to be updated with the use of PPE. And I noticed then in the order that was put out, the requirement that, uh, nursing facilities use PPEs with any, if they have any, um, you know, uh, contact with residents within that six feet, use PPEs, but it also says, um, if available. So I'd like to understand what our, what we understand as a city on, um, our nursing homes or nursing facilities, uh, in the community's access to PPE. Uh, did we put if available in that order because we're not sure if they have access? Um, and what do we know right now about the access for PPEs for, um, nursing facilities so that they can, um, anytime they have contact within six feet with a resident, they can be wearing, uh, appropriate, um, N95s, for example, if they're doing breathing treatments or other kinds of masks? I'm, I'm asking this because, um, you know, as you mentioned, Dr. Esq., what we're trying to do right now ahead of the issue, um, to prevent the spread in nursing facilities as much as possible. And I know that's one, one important component. So can you speak to the access to PPEs? What, and be sure and let us know what the challenges are so that we can understand if there's additional work to be done, make sure we have access to sufficient PPEs.
Certainly, Councilmember, and, and great questions. Um, you know, unfortunately, given our, uh, woefully understocked strategic national stockpile, uh, we're still in the situation of, of having to, uh, prioritize who gets the PPE. And, you, you know, we don't like to be in the situation of deciding, is it the nursing home, is it the first responder, is it the hospital, is it the ICU, uh, that gets it? Uh, the indications that, that, that we're getting are that that situation is improving on a daily basis. We know that finally the Defense Production Act was, uh, was, was put into place and that manufacturing is, is happening. Uh, and we're hopeful that, that we, in, you know, in the near future, won't have to triage as much as we have in the past. Uh, having said that, uh, through the EOC, uh, there is a PPE task force and requests will come from nursing homes, from hospitals and from first responders for access to that PPE cache that we do have. Uh, Director Ortiz, uh, he may have some specific information regarding those requests from nursing homes and, and how they are filled. I will say part of the, the strike team deployment is deploying with additional PPE, uh, to ensure that, that those facilities who are experiencing outbreaks have sufficient supplies of the appropriate equipment, uh, to really help, uh, in that, in that transmission.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, doctor. Uh, just like you indicated, we, we, we have enough PPE to meet the need, but we have to make sure that we're using it very, uh, very carefully, very sparingly. Uh, if there's, uh, any activities that can be done, uh, where, and, and minimize the, the, the use of PPEs, uh, that, that will be, uh, we're still in the condition with that as a, a favorable action to take to ensure that we don't use all the PPE quickly. Uh, if a nursing home, uh, or other medical facility in a community has a need for PPE, uh, those requests are being coordinated through the EOC, uh, the, the, the capital area trauma regional advisory committee through their, um, regional medical operations center is contacting them, uh, and those requests are being received, uh, uh, through that, uh, through that body and referred to the EOC. And then those are referred to our resource staging area and are supplied from the PPE that we have on hand based on the priorities that we have established, uh, in, in, in triaging in that manner. Up to this point, we have been able to, uh, fulfill every request. Now, it may take us a little bit longer, uh, to fulfill a request by, by, but, uh, and it may not exactly get, uh, what they're asking for, but we get a, as close as the possibly can level of PPE, uh, to, to make sure that they have, uh, a PPE that they can use, which may require them to modify their, their, um, normal actions accordingly. Um, we are continuing to, uh, to work with them, um, also with the Travis County Medical Society, who is another source that has, um, um, uh, working to identify, uh, medical facilities, like nursing homes that may have needs for PPE and route those to us or fulfill them if they have the PPE available as well.
Anne, you're muted.
Oh. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, that's helpful. Um, so a related question, I understand with the strike forces, that includes both staffing, additional staffing and personnel, uh, and PPEs. So I understand we, we have asked for four strike forces, uh, for four locations. And I'm, I'm wondering, um, but I know that we have more than four nursing facilities where we've had outbreaks. So can you help me understand, uh, why we are not asking for strike forces for every location that has an outbreak? Are we thinking that that's not needed or can, just help me understand that?
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember, uh, this is a matter of prioritizing those with the, with the more substantial outbreaks at this stage. Uh, you, once we have, have those deployed at those facilities, then we will certainly move to, uh, enhance the, uh, the capabilities of the other facilities as well that are experiencing outbreaks. Ideally, uh, all the ones that, uh, that have more than two patients that, uh, that are positive will receive a strike team, uh, but it's going to take us some time to, to find the personnel. Uh, you know, the challenge in the reality right now is, uh, you know, we're, we're hearing from nursing homes through our task force that a, you know, a, a nurse assistant who may normally make $14 an hour at a facility, uh, you know, that position is now being offered at, at $24 an hour in, in some facilities that are experiencing outbreaks and they still cannot find individuals to fill those spots. Uh, so, you know, there, there is a challenge with identifying personnel who, uh, are, are able to go to those facilities and, and provide the support. Um, you know, some of the facilities that are part of larger chains have pulled people from other facilities and, and, uh, placed them in those that are facing staff shortages due to illness. Uh, of course, the challenge is you create a, a cascade or domino effect because you may leave other facilities less protected, which may make them more vulnerable. So I think the goal here is to not utilize current nursing home staffing from other locations, but introduce new staffing, uh, from, you know, clinics or surgical hospitals or even, uh, the state or National Guard that may be able to augment without, without creating that cascade effect at other facilities. Uh, but we do need a, a large injection of personnel, uh, to, to get this under control. Uh, I really do believe that our effectiveness at, at protecting this nursing home and long-term care facility, uh, uh, locations will completely determine how successful we are as a community in, in making it through the pandemic.
Okay. So I'm, now that the request to the state is for funding, not for people, that we have to come up with the, ourselves for our, our, um, strike force. Do, am I understanding? So we asked for funding from the state for four strike forces because that's what we've got at the moment, uh, in terms of staffing for the most immediate need. Is that right?
Uh, so the, the request was for people, people and equipment. Um, and, and while I may be able to talk more about the, the particulars of the request, uh, this is a very similar concept to something called the EMTF or Emergency Medical Task Force model that's run through the state, uh, that are deployed to disasters. They may be deployed to floods or hurricanes or wildfires, but it is, it is medical personnel, uh, that, uh, that through a state contract, uh, agreed to be deployed to, uh, to locations. And there's a, you know, there's a process in that circumstance. If they're coming from, uh, a hospital, to pay for that person to, uh, be deployed as a state asset, they pay for backfilling of that, uh, that person's regular role, uh, and, uh, and it's a deployable asset around the state. So we're, we're hopeful that the state may be able to use that same model modified for, uh, for this nursing home task force and this nursing home strike team. Uh, but I will say, uh, the, the strike team is not just nurses and physicians and, and advanced practice providers. It's also things like maintenance workers, uh, kitchen staff, because, uh, in some of these facilities, those are the people who are out, those are the people who've been sick or, uh, you know, are under, uh, under isolation orders at this stage and, and they need support in all those aspects, uh, including the support personnel.
Okay. Thank you. I, I'd like to have further discussion at some point. I'm hopeful that we can ask for strike forces for all our facilities that, um, have an outbreak. So I just have two more questions. So can you speak to, uh, to the, um, let's see, uh, to the scope of testing at nursing facilities? Just because that's something that's been a, a big question, testing of, of people that are working in nursing facilities. I, I know that's addressed some in the, um, in the, uh, control orders, but I'm, that's been a big question in the community. So it'd just be helpful if you could, um, provide an update in the thinking about how that'll occur or how that'll be rolled out.
Uh, yes. Another great question, uh, Councilmember. Uh, so I issued a control order on Friday for the one facility, uh, which required, uh, testing of staff, uh, including those who are asymptomatic. Uh, and, and this is a bit of a, of a pilot project to, to determine if we're going to detect anybody, uh, who is positive that is not symptomatic. Uh, Dell Medical School did a, a similar sample of healthcare workers about a month ago. Uh, they tested a hundred individuals and found zero of them were positive, uh, without symptoms. Uh, so it'll be an interesting test for us to see. I think ideally, uh, you know, at, at these facilities, uh, it, it would not be unreasonable for us to test staff once a week, um, until, you know, those fellows that have outbreaks or even an, an individual case of a resident, uh, to, to test those, uh, once a week until we have a, uh, two incubation periods without the detection of, of, of a new case. Uh, some of this is, is going to be related to our testing capacity. Uh, we are, are gaining in confidence that our testing capacity is, is going to be in a, in a situation where we can, uh, offer that kind of testing. But I expect over the next 30 days to 60 days, that the testing is going to be more powerful, it's going to be faster and it's going to be less expensive. Uh, and as we look to, to point of care testing as the, as the best, uh, solution for this, this, uh, method of testing staff, we have the potential in the future to, to test staff, you know, uh, before they check in and go in the facility, uh, if we can get a test that is, is quick enough and that's portable and can be done on site. I will say that the, uh, the state has provided us with a Abbott ID Now Analyzer. This is the, the rapid port of care test, uh, which may result in, in 15 minutes. Uh, we are, are still waiting on test kits for that. We don't have any test kits for that at this stage because they're in short supply. But we're hopeful that we may be able to utilize that, uh, to deploy to some facilities in the circumstance of outbreak. And we're working with our Austin Public Health Lab Director, have discussions about the, uh, the practicality of, of that kind of relationship with this newly analyzer.
Okay. Thank you very much. My last question is, I'm not sure who this one is for, but I'm wanting, wanting to understand if we, um, I, I think we said this, but as a city, what our plan for, plan for reopening is, or actually, when we will have a opportunity to discuss our plan for reopening? That's really my question. Um, I'm, I, I think, I know folks are working on that. And so, Mayor, I don't know if this is a question for you or for Dr. Esq., but I'd like to understand, uh, the timeline and the setting in which we can have a conversation as a council to understand the approach that we are wanting to take, uh, to reopening.
I think that would be an important thing for, for us to be able to talk about as a council. a council. Uh and I don't know, Anne, if there's an item on Thursday on the agenda that would enable us to to engage in that uh conversation or not. If not, we need to set it. Um you know, we have the we there are different groups are looking at the health implications and the modeling implications of different kinds of scenarios. Uh Dr. Esq. has a task force that uh he has that is looking at that uh issue. Uh we've asked some of the people in the business community to to talk about how they would see um uh kind of reentry. And quite frankly, it's been precipitated a little bit on the timing by what the government governor did um uh last week. Really high level, uh and I think it is something we need to talk about as a as a council at a really high level. Um when we started the the everything we did was designed to be able to find the virus everywhere it was, and then to isolate it, where we found it, and then to treat it. Uh the important thing for everybody to remember is that we the virus is no less infectious today than it was back then. Uh in some ways, we're still at the same place we were back in in March when we moved into this. Uh when we talk about adapting businesses or reopening businesses, we're talking about increasing the number of physical interactions that happen. Anytime you increase the number of physical interactions, you're taking greater risk uh that the virus is going to spread because it's the separation and the isolation that that stops that. And the question is, can you control that risk? Um the elements to being able to control the risk are being able to do task testing at a much higher level so that you can find virus when it when it does spread, if it does spread in that scenario. Um it isolating component of it is dependent on our ability and the resources we can put against contact tracing, uh and then taking advantage of the fact that we have bought more time as a community to bring in supply. So for example, if you open up restaurants, for example, and let people go to a restaurant, I mean, right now, I can tell you, uh everybody that I have come into contact with over the last five days. So if for whatever reason I had virus or they had virus, it would be really easy to find the universe of people that touched that. If I go into a restaurant, uh it's gonna be harder to to do that uh because I'm running into more people. Now you depending on how you structure that, how many people can sit at tables, how close are tables? Uh does everybody have to log in when they go to a restaurant? Not only customers, but people who work there so that if anybody has a virus, you can go back and say, I was in the restaurant this time, these are the other people that were in that universe. Uh do you you make it so that there are no condiments on the table? Can you really clean down all of the table and all the chairs so that the next person who sits there can't touch something that somebody else touched without it being disinfected? Um the larger you get with more and more people, the more opportunities are to touch something that somebody else has touched, uh the greater the inability to be able to know exactly who it is that you came in contact with. All those are contributing risk factors. That said, again, I think this is something that we need to talk about as as a council. So let me work with Anne and then figure out how to to make sure that we have that.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is this last one's a very simple yes or no. Do Dr. Esq. do the um control orders, the nursing home control orders, they only cover city of Austin or Travis County? I'm wondering about the nursing facilities in the communities that surround us.
Uh great question, Councilmember. Uh because I serve as a health authority for for both the city and the county, they apply to both jurisdictions.
Uh Councilmember Alter.
Good morning. Um before I ask my other questions, I just wanted to confirm, is Bree Franco gonna be doing a briefing relative to um federal and state funding this morning as well?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Um so I wanna follow up on uh Councilmember Kitchen's um request to have that conversation and just echo um that desire for us to be able to, as a council, have a better understanding of some of the variables we need to consider and think about um as we think about what reopening looks like. Um and I'm not sure if this is a question for the mayor or or for staff, um but we have um the the changes that the governor has instituted um that are happening this week in those three areas, um but we still have some control and ability to shape how those play out in our community. So for instance, if we're moving to a retail curbside, um we can provide clear protocols, we can make sure that we um provide good supply chain for the sanitizers that they might need and and other kinds of things. Um and I think that holds in all three of those areas. So can you speak a little bit to our plans? They may be in progress and may be rolled out, obviously, this happening over the course of the week, um to get the right information to the people who may be um responsible for carrying out those openings or be workers, um so that we do those in the safest way possible for our community under the guidance of the governor that we need to proceed in that manner.
And that is how we handled it with respect to construction. So the question that I think as we're alters asking, uh Dr. Esq., is is there guidance uh that uh you're working on or that can issue associated with um our protocols with respect to curbside service? I don't know if we have any that relate to the restaurant uh curbside service. I don't recall any or not.
Well, part of the reason that I'm
Should we do that?
Part of the reason that I'm asking is that with the um with the curbside restaurant, it took a little while to get it going and get it right, um but we know that the risks are high if we get it wrong, that we can have more contagion. And so before they open up on Friday, if we can have that in place, and it's not just the curbside, you know, what are we telling our park staff? I mean, we were out by the park yesterday and the people who were mowing the lawn were sitting next to each other with no face masks within six feet of other, and they are our staff. Um so how are we approaching this to be um the most safe as possible?
Yeah, uh Councilmember, great question. Uh you know, my uh my review of of the governor's recommendations for uh the curbside pickup for retail was was quite prescriptive and in the methods that had to be utilized for uh for uh those procedures, that you know, there was basically no contact allowed between employees and and those who were were picking up items. Uh we'll review those again with staff and and see if there are any uh further recommendations that we can provide uh or clarification that we can provide to to make things safer. Um but but I agree, I think that uh you know, as the mayor said, when we look at risk in the discussions we've been having in our small group uh think tank in relation to reopening business, uh has to do with assessment of of various aspects of of risk and the ability to mitigate that risk. When it comes down to it, the risk we're trying to mitigate is that person-to-person interaction. So when we look at at can we open this or can we do that, it is going to boil down to how many times individuals are going to be face-to-face? How many times are they gonna be within six feet and can you mitigate that or not? Um and you know, it's uh as we start to to roll things out and look to roll out additional uh uh businesses in the future as far as reopening is concerned, the public's gotta understand that that this should not at all be seen as an indication as we're over this. Uh I hear people saying, oh, it's you know, we're at the peak or past the peak, we're close to the peak. The peak is generated by us, by our decisions, uh as individuals, as a community, and if we don't continue to embrace those good decisions, if we don't continue to social distance, if we don't continue to do the face coverings in public, then we're gonna be back in a a stay-home, work-safe order again uh in in a short amount of time. Uh so I I I think the the clear message to the community has to be, we have to remain vigilant, and that vigilance will probably have to last for at least a year. Uh so we're going to have to get used to doing things safer, going to work safer if uh you know, if it's determined that that you can go back to your workplace to some extent, shopping safer, uh you know, going to the the post office safer. Uh we have to continue to uh to be protective of ourselves. The better we can do that as a community, the 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 better chance we're gonna have to to open things up and to keep things open for a longer period of time, despite the fact that that more interactions are happening. Um when we look at what uh what I refer to as as the effective social distancing percentage, uh you know, we have actual social distancing, how how uh how good are people staying at six feet apart? And then we have effective social distancing. What are those other uh things that are happening, decisions that are being made that are leading to that effective social distancing? That's about ninety-four percent right now, uh better than we expected that we could get to. But that's based upon those decisions. We need those good decisions to continue despite the fact that that finger is going to be starting to open up more. Uh in discussions with our our healthcare system, the other one of the other items uh opening uh tomorrow or scheduled to potentially open tomorrow is that elective surgery. Uh part of the governor's instructions for that is that uh the healthcare systems have to be at a stage where they're gonna be self-sufficient on PPE, not only now, but for the duration of the pandemic. So we've had this discussion with our our uh hospital system CEOs, uh they're evaluating the situation. Uh most of them think that they are at that that uh stage where they can ensure enough PPE or they are close to that stage. Uh so you know, uh again, I think we're acting cautiously, we wanna be sure as much as possible. Uh and uh you know, I know we're all in a rush to get things back open, but if we don't do it right, if we don't do it in a measured way, we're gonna be back in the in the the shelter-in-place situation. And you know, I think it's worth taking a little extra time, as you suggested, to make sure that when we start rolling things out, we're doing it well and it's sustainable.
So so thank you, Ms. Esq. I I Dr. Esq., I think, you know, really what I'm trying to uh get at is how do we make sure that as we have to operate with these three openings, that we do them in the safest way possible? When we allowed carryout with the restaurants, we were dealing with a population that was used to food safety measures and disinfecting and doing all that kind of stuff on a very regular basis. I'm not sure with the curbside retail that they have the same protocols um in place. Um and I would like to make sure that, you know, no matter how detailed the governor's um guidance is, that we are providing those same protocols, taking what we've learned from the restaurant and the food stuff of, you know, opening your trunk and putting it in and and you know, and we're also making sure that we are helping to ease some of the supply chain problems for the PPE, for those who are doing that retail curbside. You know, we need to get them the hand sanitizer, we need to make sure they can buy it from us, but there's a supply chain issue that we may need to be kind of resolving, and um it needs to be in one place so that the businesses that are trying to navigate how to do this um have clear guidance from us that this is the safest way, you know, to the extent that we know, so that we're taking the precautions we need as we reopen. Um I I'm I'm more confident that the hospitals will um understand how to do that and take the precautions. Um what steps are we taking with respect to our parks and what does this actually mean relative to what we already have in place for our parks, um if we move forward with what the governor has designated?
Uh I'll ask Stephanie to to see if she has uh more insight on to the particular measures uh in relation to parks.
I'm I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um I'm gonna just check and see if ACM Shorter is is here because he has more um details about what um Director McNeely has been doing in the park space um with the various parks. I know they've done some signage and um they have, you know, been been really proactive with um with parking. There was an outreach effort this weekend, and so I'm gonna I'm gonna defer to ACM Shorter.
Hi, this is Chris Shorter. Uh can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Perfect. So yes, um the the uh the um governor's order is not uh going to and be inconsistent or make it difficult for the park system to continue to operate in the in the way that we have. We have, thank you, and I want to really acknowledge Director uh McNeely and her team for the great work that's been done to really continue to educate around social distancing, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to um to educate the community around uh the safe and effective use of parks and trails. Uh I'll also say that the Trail Foundation and other partners have really done a good job uh with signage and uh making sure that they educate the population uh that's utilizing their facilities uh as well. That said, uh we have worked, the parks uh system has worked with the Transportation Department to really limit the amount of parking uh that's being done uh uh around certain metropolitan parks and district parks, uh but that our parks have remained open uh throughout this uh throughout this time. And so that said, we have certainly closed amenities associated with our parks, and we have, again, really worked hard to make sure that we educate our population around social distancing. And like uh Director Hayden mentioned, uh we're out uh we were out this weekend, Director McNeely herself was out this weekend, um making sure that she personally was talking to um residents about the importance of social distancing uh at Givens Park. Uh that said, uh I hope that answers your question, um and if it doesn't, I'm happy to elaborate more.
I guess I'm trying to understand how the governor's order might change what we're doing in parks, um particularly with respect to the park amenities.
So the governor's order, governor's order only relates to state parks, and he reopened state parks. Uh the where we govern are our rules with respect to our city parks and also the county parks. Uh and we have restrictions that that go beyond what the governor said with respect to our city and county parks.
Okay.
Governor's order doesn't impact our ability to go further or put in additional limitations or rules. Um but there, so it doesn't impact us, and if we need to go further in what we've done with parks, with city parks or county parks, we can certainly do that. The incident that you mentioned where you said you saw crews together that were not wearing face coverings and and were too close together, unfortunately, we see all over the city in that we should certainly be doing everything we can to make sure that that we reaffirm to our employees that that's behavior that is um uh in violation of the the orders that have been set.
Thank you. Um and then my last question, I think it's for um Dr. Esq. Um so we're seeing numbers for Austin and Travis County, but obviously, we have parts of our city that are in other counties. Um how do we think about the numbers that we have for the city of Austin relative to other counties? Are we only seeing Austin and Travis County joint numbers?
Uh so the numbers that we display are primarily the uh Travis County numbers uh as our jurisdiction. That will include city of Austin numbers that are are within places like Williamson County. Uh the the hospitalization numbers that we display daily are from the five-county MSA. Uh so that does include hospitalizations from the 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 surrounding area. Um again, you you know, all along, we've been working uh as much as we can as a as a region. Uh we've been uh sharing ideas and and strategies with our partners. And uh also, as I mentioned before, this uh this this contact tracing, uh this Salesforce platform that we're encouraging to to move statewide uh i- is really important, uh particularly since thirty percent of our workforce come from another county into into Austin and Travis County to work. Uh so it's really critical that we continue to break down those jurisdictional barriers so that we are are uh having that consistency across borders. Uh and you know, we we work as much as we can to support our jurisdictions that that don't have their own public health departments and uh and And we've been pleased with the cooperation by our surrounding jurisdictions. I think we can continue to enhance those efforts to make sure that as we move forward, we can do it as safely as possible and as one unit.
So, I just want to make sure I didn't understand the part about the Williamson County in the numbers if they were in Austin. Is that in our numbers or not in our, probably if it's in the city of Austin, but in Williamson?
Yeah, if they're city of Austin Williamson County, they'll be included in our numbers. If they're not in the city of Austin, that will be included in Williamson County's numbers.
Okay, great. Thank you, and thank you for all the work that you and the other staff are doing to help us navigate this.
And I'll just note, before we go to the next council member, that the graphs and charts that Dr. Essot referred to in his briefing have been emailed to you, and they've also been posted as backup. And so, just as a reference point to some of the descriptions that Dr. Essot was providing earlier.
Thank you. Paige, did you have something?
I did, thank you. And I really appreciate the questions and comments on the park spaces and retail to go. We have a number of trailheads in District Eight, and there are some that people are wearing their face masks and practicing social distancing, and then there are others that aren't following the rules so closely. And I really appreciate Director McNeely and 311 and some of the other individuals that have helped make sure that we don't have large amounts of people gathering near these trailheads. But I really appreciate where people are, so social distancing and keeping away from each other, because we all need to get out of the house sometimes and access our trails. The question that I had is actually about the RISE funding and the website that's available for people to apply for assistance. Is the site the same for individual people and families as it is for nonprofits? Or are those two different places that people would need to go to?
Good morning. For individuals, we are wanting them to call 211 to get that information or go to the 211 website. And then, the other website is for the application process. Individual can look at that website just to, you know, just have an idea of kind of what this program is. But for the specifics of each of the programs, we're asking them to go through 211 just to get the overall information, but contact those agencies directly. We're going to update the website as we get more partners that are contracted to do the services. We are going to update the website. So we'll add the partners we have right now to the website. They are sending us some additional information this week, so we'll put some hyperlinks on our website as well. So, we're gonna be updating as we're going along.
Okay, that's really helpful and actually leads into another question I had on the same topic, which was, is it only available for nonprofits who were vendors with the city up until a certain date? Or could people still update their vendor registries or start new ones in case maybe there's a partner that has, you know, a connected network of helping individuals in Austin but may just not be a city partner at this time? Is that vendor application process something they could still begin or update?
Yes, it is. And we have that on the website, which just kind of lets them know they need to do the vendor registration. So, get them to do the vendor registration and then the application. They can do those at the same time.
Okay, that's really helpful information. I appreciate that, Director Hayden. And a last thought that I had, as I know that the schools are closed through the end of the school year, and as we start looking at what the process looks like to slowly reopen, I realize there's a lot of concern in our community for parents being expected to go back to work or being expected to be able to do overtime hours but not have daycare assistance, even if they're not necessarily considered the quote-unquote essential employees. That if childcare places are not opened back up, there could be a little bit of a disconnect as we try to get back to a sense of normalcy where parents are expected to go back to the office, but they still don't have anyone to watch their kids. So, I don't know that that's a question more than just a comment. I'm sure it's on your radar, because I know it's been since the beginning, but we may just want to make sure that we're well-calibrated and have an answer for our best practice to make sure that we can get back to normal while addressing that concern as well.
Our childcare task force, they are not only just focusing on a central worker, and so if an individual, you know, has questions about that, I'm looking at my document here, but we'll get some information out. We know that, for example, like Boys and Girls Club, as well as the YMCA, is providing some services, childcare services. And then, of course, if they're city employees, they can bring their children to the one of the three-part locations. Our park staff have just really been exceptional in providing this additional care for our children of city employees during this time.
I really appreciate that. I know it's a bit tricky if the schools aren't open, there may be families that don't have a connection to childcare or daycare that could benefit from that information, so thank you.
Mayor, just for the council, the Dr. Essot has to leave for Commissioner's Court in a minute, so maybe if there's one pressing question, but we might have to take the rest in another forum because Dr. Essot is needed to leave. So, with that, maybe if there's just one pressing question for him.
We'll do two real quick questions on Essot. Councilmember Kesar, Councilmember Tovo, both raise your hand. We'll keep the question for Essot first and Shorter as you can.
Thank you. It's really helpful to hear that we're at 6.6 per capita tests. What's our goal as far as per capita testing sort of over time here, just so we can set some level of expectation for people? And then, can you describe, once we start getting towards that goal, sort of what it looks like? You know, I know we've been talking a lot about flattening the curve and then also getting to the right testing isolation treatment regime. What is, you know, where is, what are the states at per capita? What's our goal? What is it to get there? Where do we want it to, give us everybody a sort of a sense of where we're trying to get to?
So, we are working along with the state and others to identify appropriate goals. I can tell you that the recommendation from a report from Harvard was 152 per 100,000 per day, which would be 1,842 per day in the city of Austin. We are not close to that at this stage, but of course, there's arguments, I apologize, there's a fire alarm going off. There are arguments that that number is too high, so we're continuing to work with our partners on that. I expect the state recommendations tomorrow will identify a goal which is going to be less than that. But, you know, I think that an indication is the rate of positivity. WHO is recommending that a positive rate of, a maximum of 10% as a trigger to consider reopening things. That's a combination of threat, and it's a combination of testing capacity that will make that determination of the percent positive. So we'll continue to track that. And one of the things we've asked our think tank to consider is, what are those triggers to toggle up and to toggle down our activities related to commerce? How do we best prevent that exceeding capacity of our healthcare system, maximize our protection of our community? And part of that is going to be looking at those triggers for toggling up and toggling down, as well as further efforts to cocoon or protect those who are vulnerable from complications. You know, we have identified certain populations who are at higher risk for hospitalization and higher risk for death. So part of our success and our ability to sustain opening operations will be how effectively we protect those who are at risk from hospitalization and death. So we're continuing to work with our academic partners, with the state, to best identify that strategy. And we're hopeful that we're gonna have some results of those efforts at modeling later this week.
That's great. Just to get those numbers all apples to apples, are we at 6.6 per thousand per people per week? Or, because you used a big Harvard number that was per thousand or per 10,000, can you just sort of try to get us to the same unit of measurement?
Yeah, so, great question. So that 6.6 is the total cumulative per capita rate of testing. So to put it in those numbers, we need to assess 1.52 individuals per thousand per day.
So currently, we're at 6.6 per thousand since the pandemic began, since we began testing, and we're trying to get to 1.52 per thousands per day, which would be increasing that 6.6 by 1.52 each day?
Uh, yes.
Never do math in public, I apologize.
Yeah, it would be a much higher rate of testing. So that 6.6 is over a six-week period. So, you know, it's that number divided by 42, so we're not close to that target of 152 for 100,000 per day.
Got it. So that 6.6 would increase by 1.52 each day if we were at the level that Harvard recommended, which some folks have said might be high, but that's what Harvard, that Harvard study said.
Yeah, again, that 6.6 is cumulative, so we'd have to do the math on that and divide it by what the average number is per day, which would be much, much lower.
Got it.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Councilmember Tovo.
Good morning, Dr. Essot. I have quite a few questions about testing that we won't have time to talk about right now and some other issues. So I want to focus on two quick things. Quickly explain Slide Three, I think now that we have it in the backup and on computer screens, I would. Oh, you're not gonna be using it. Never mind, I'll figure out a way to ask that question outside of here. At our last council meeting, we talked about demographics of testing and whether that could be made available. And I wondered if that, I haven't seen any information about the testing demographics. I understand you don't, public health isn't necessarily aware of all of the testing outlets, but do you have any compiled demographics at this point of who is being tested in our community?
That testing, or the positive demographics, positive test demographics are on that slide two that you have. This Salesforce platform will give us demographic information on the total, sorry, fire alarm again, the total number of people tested, the demographics, as well as the zip codes of those individuals who are being tested. That will allow us to structure our outreach to ensure that we are reaching communities uniformly. It will allow us to target messaging to communities where people aren't getting tested. It will really help to improve our strategy at both our testing communications as well as our intervention communications. And I will add one other thing. It will also allow us to potentially do targeted asymptomatic testing. So if we have areas where we have a high incidence of new cases, we may be allowed for a certain percentage or certain number of asymptomatic individuals signing up in that particular area to be tested as well. So we're looking at a number of these factors, and we certainly believe that this new platform will help us to break down some of those barriers as well as give us more situational awareness regarding things like testing.
I think that will be full information. It sounds as if the answer is that the demographic information about who and where people are being tested or where their zip codes of origin are, is not available at this point, but once that software program is more fully utilized, it will be. I would like to get back to that chart on Page Three and see if we can, just very quickly, if you could offer the explanation about what is happening here in terms of this trend. So we see the number of new cases on, as the yellow bar, we see the number of red cases increasing. And then, the green line indicates the percent of increase, and it jogs around quite a bit, but is... What would you say, can you help us understand?
Sure.
Especially some of the dips in these last several days. There was a pretty precipitous drop.
Yes, no, and I can't actually describe.
So what can you tell for those kinds of irregularities in the graph?
Yeah, great questions. So, yeah, as you described, the red bars are cumulative, the yellow are the new cases per day, which has been relatively steady over quite a number of days. The green is the log of the percent increase as compared to the previous day. So we're gonna see some regular variation in those numbers based upon how many people are tested on a particular day, as well as how efficient the labs are at reporting those results. So we have been seeing decreased results on the weekends, and so we often see an increase on Monday or Tuesday as they get past that backlog. I will say that last week, we signed a new contract with a new lab here in Texas that has substantial, substantially more capacity to run tests, so we're expecting an even quicker turnaround. As we move to the Salesforce platform that I mentioned, we will not have the lag of somebody sending us a fax for results. Those results will come back instantly to the patient and to us at the same time. So we should have less variability in the daily testing numbers and the daily results as we implement that system. You know, I will say that early on, you can see that on the left side of the graph, substantial increases on a daily basis. Obviously, small numbers are much easier to double, and as the numbers get larger, it's, you know, you need substantially more cases to double that number. You know, over time, we transitioned from a two-day doubling rate down to, you know, right now, we're about 12 days for doubling. So this is positive, but we still want to see decreases in those numbers. You know, I mentioned before the public facing, public enrollment process. I can tell you that over the next week to two weeks, we're going to see an increase in number of cases because we're testing more. We shouldn't be alarmed by that. At the same time, we are also following the hospitalized numbers, which will give us, the hospitalized numbers are less prone to variability related to testing, and we've seen some plateau of that over a number of days. So I think for modeling and, you know, the prediction of when we're going to peak, it should probably, it's probably better based upon the hospitalized data, which is less based upon the testing and more reflective of the actual disease burden in the community. When we think about the actual number of cases, we multiply this number by seven to eight as a better indication of the actual number of cases in the community. And that's a factor that we've been talking about for weeks now, and generally, a typical factor that we apply for other outbreaks as well.
And so, I think it would be able to echo and underscore my colleague's request that we have a conversation about what it would look like to reopen, but especially some more, some time to really look at and potentially even hear from some of the individuals who are doing the modeling. Do you have an estimate at this point, based on some of that modeling, of where our peak is or might be? And whether it has been pushed out further because of the success of the social distancing?
That's a great question. I think we are clearly flattening the curve in Austin County based upon the stretching out of that doubling rate in cases and that plateau that we're seeing. You know, where are, the prediction models are... are, you know, at a, at a point of convergence right now. So we've got to be a little careful about, about predicting peaks at this stage because it, it may be too early to tell which direction we're headed. I think that as this week progresses, that data is going to become more clear. And, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful by the end of this week that we'll have a, a much clearer picture about when we're, when we're going to expect that peak. Again, we've had factors change over the past two weeks that may impact or stretch out that peak, namely, the, the reactivation of construction as well as, as the Easter holiday. And we've heard anecdotally from a number of sources that, that a number of families have gotten together. There were still some activity that brought people together. So we're, we're a bit concerned that, that we may see a little increase based upon that as well. I think that as we continue to increase the testing, we're going to get a better picture regarding where we are and we're going to be able to, to predict peaks a, a bit more clearly. I will also say that our, our hospital system partners are now providing us with daily information regarding hospitalized individuals so that we can better assess what, what's happening with our Travis County residents, better assess the demographics associated with those individuals, and also feed better data into the model so that it can be more accurate.
Well, thank you very much. And you indicated, and thank you for reminding us about the construction and Easter holidays and the way in which that might impact where we, what we see in the weeks ahead. You talked earlier about how effective social distancing has been. And I just want to ask you to, to underscore a point you made earlier, that part of why our hospital capacity is, is keeping up at the, at this point is because of the good choices that our leaders, including, including you, have made and, and the responsiveness of the public. And, and that that is really, that is really necessary to continue.
Absolutely. We, as a community, will determine when that peak happens and when another peak happens in the future. It's in our control. This thing has not gone away. It's not going to go away. And it's, it's still essential for us to, to stretch this out as long as we can. We have some real hope about, about treatments that, that may be identified soon, which will be effective. And you've seen some of those in the, in the media regarding, you know, well-controlled studies on, on some of these interventions. The further we can push this out, the better chance we have at treatment, probably as the first step. And, and then, you know, as early as the fall, starting, starting vaccination trials in people like healthcare workers and first responders. So it is still very prudent for us to all be vigilant as a community to continue to flatten the curve, continue to protect people's lives. And if, if we become lax on those things, even in the short term, we're going to be back in the situation of a, of a rising peak.
Thank you very much. And thank you for all of your leadership on this.
All right, Dr. Scott, thank you for being with us. Say hi to the county commissioners.
Mayor, may I take this opportunity to suggest that we transition to Bree Franco in a presentation? And then obviously, there may be more questions from council, but just to move through that presentation, then we can conclude with the rest of the briefing.
May I just have a brief statement that I want to make?
Go ahead, council. Go ahead, Bill.
Yes, you know, we are, because of the governor opening, opening our state, the state parks, a lot of people misunderstood that. And I think they're going to like parks like Decker. You know, we, this past Sunday, I got a phone call saying there were between 40 and 60 people having a party, not practicing safe distance. And, you know, a Hispanic community might not understand, you know, when the, when the governor made that announcement that they were supposed to be safe distance and practice all the safety about it. And I've been really concerned and I, you know, with the, on Sundays, there, there's a big, those parks have a big draw to them. So I'm just hoping that we could get our, our staff to make sure they can monitor that, that those parks so that to make sure that they're not grouping and having big parties over there.
Thank you. Let's go then to Bree. Is Bree here?
Yes, mayor. Good morning, council members. Bree Franco, Intergovernmental Relations Officer. Do you have my slide deck up with the CARES Act funding PowerPoint in front of you?
No, and, and I'm not sure we're set up to be able to, oh, here it is. Got it.
Okay. Moving to slide two, everyone. I'm going to give you an overview today of what we know is in the CARES Act for the city of Austin and some of our surrounding entities. I'm going to start with the big fund that we've all heard about. That's the Coronavirus Relief Fund. This fund was created to provide direct aid directly from the federal government to cities and counties with populations greater than 500,000. That means that both the city of Austin and Travis County are eligible. We received what we believe is our funding yesterday. Just, I say believe because it was just wired to us without an explanation, but it's a substantial amount of 170.8 million. Last night, I received confirmation from my counterpart at the Travis County that they have not yet received their 54 million, but that's what they're anticipating. You will note that the Travis County number is lower than ours because our allotment is deducted from the Travis County allotment. That's how the fund was set up. I'm sure they'll receive it soon and we'll let you know as soon as they do. As we've said many times, we are still awaiting rules from the Treasury Department regarding the use of this fund. And that's important because as we move to the next slide, slide three, I have taken the language directly from the legislation that describes the use of the fund. And I want you to look at the language that I put in red and bolded that basically breaks down what I believe are the most important parts, which is that they are to be for necessary expenditures that were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved. So in other words, expenditures that we didn't budget in the budget we're operating in now. And these expenditures must have been incurred between March 1st and December 30th, 2020. So there is a cutoff date on when we can claim the expenditures, you know, so we can, if I read this correctly, I would read it to say we could have an expenditure on December 30th and then use the fund to refund that expenditure. That is the extent of the guidance we have on the Coronavirus Relief Fund. I mean, it'll be very important once we get those rules to know what they say. And we are advocating to our federal delegations channels to allow for very broad flexibility of what that means, that they provide us with as much broad flexibility for these terms. And if they need to, even after these rules are put out, if they need to change the legislation to provide even more flexibility, we are asking for that as well. I'm going to move on. I know you all will have questions. I'll go through the entire presentation first, which is very short. Move to next, the next slide, slide four. So the Coronavirus Relief Fund is our first big bucket. The next bucket I want you to think of are the items for which we've already received funding notifications. So for instance, we know our dollar amounts. Some of these items are even on the council agenda on Thursday for your approval. And those are the ones listed on slide four. And you'll see on there that we got additional funding for CDBG. We've got additional funding for the Homeless Emergency Solutions Grants. HOPLA is what we call the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, the Burn JAG. And the airport received us a decent amount of funding for their operation, operations and so forth. All of these funding sources do have less requirements than their normal use. We are detailing all those right now and can provide you with more information as this goes forward. And they also have different dates in which they can be used. Moving to the next bucket, slide five, these are the items in the CARES Act in which we are eligible for funding and we haven't gotten notification yet. So for CDBG, the legislation created a new formula based on COVID-related housing market disruption. And they are also providing funding to states for states to use in entitlement and non-entitlement communities. There is no deadline for when they have to come up with this formula and save for the state on their side. So they've advised us not to wait on this in order to move forward with the other funds. And we'll keep monitoring as that money progresses, as those formulas are created and advise you of what's happening next. The same is true for the Homeless Emergency Solutions Grants. That again, is a new formula based on COVID response. And there will be additional money for HOPLA. We are still waiting the Community Services Block Grant notification. Since we are the provider for that grant, we will receive those funds directly. And then there is a handful of competitive grants for which the city will have to apply. So that's the National Endowment of the Arts, National Humanities Society and the, and the EDA. But those are ones which we will have to apply for. Those are competitive grants. To provide you with some information of what we know, other entities in our community are receiving, slide six, details some of this out. As you all have heard and seen in the news, I'm sure Cap Metro received 104 million through the transit formula. And they can use that to cover operating costs, which is helpful for them. We also know that the People's Clinic and also the Travis Healthcare District, or as we know at Central Health, are receiving funds through this act as well. And we know those amounts. We will continue to try to track this information to the extent it's available. There's no one website we can go to to find all this information. So we have to go to, to multiple sources to get it. But to date, these are the other area entities that are receiving funding or have received notification of funding through the act. And the last slide, page seven, shows for Travis County and Williamson County, what we know to date that they also receive for the Burn JAG and their CDBG funding. And again, we know Travis County's Coronavirus Relief Fund amounts. I don't believe Williamson County is eligible, and I will confirm that and follow up with you all on that. That is all of my presentation. So I am happy to take questions with the assistance of other staff on this line.
Thank you. Currently, right now, in Congress is the debate and discussion about yet another version of legislation. The cities have been trying to get money included for cities and states as part of that. It looks as if the negotiations are just going to end up with the next round being additional paycheck protection dollars for businesses. Although, members of our federal delegation, both Republicans and Democrats, have indicated to me that there will be yet one more round in a few weeks, couple, three weeks, that will include additional assistance to cities and states. And we've gotten commitment from both Republicans and Democrats in our federal delegation to also address the limitation on the CARES funding we got at 150-plus million dollars to let us use that or to offset revenue losses, which means to, to use it for things that are currently in our budget, but may not be things we can do because of the. Leslie, you had your hand raised?
I did. Thanks. Bree, pages, I think, three and four, 170 million. And then the page with the details of the amounts on the second page included in 170, or are they additive to the 170?
They are additive.
Okay. And the 170 million, then it has the, is the, is the specific funding that doesn't yet have the guidance that we've been talking about. But we have guidance on.
That's correct.
The reimbursement that's in the other items. Okay. I also wanted to double check. Sometimes we talk about the money coming through CARES as stimulus, but I don't think it's actually, it isn't stimulus, right? It's in order, it's a reimbursement for money that's already spent. Stimulus would be something different. Is that correct?
Sure. I do want to clarify that on slide four, we are still waiting for guidance on the CDBG funding. We have general guidance and we generally know how this formula works and how we can use it. But because they are waiving certain restrictions, we are still waiting for that further guidance on that one. And then, of course, some of the others are very specific on their use, like the Burn JAG is a criminal justice grant that the police department regularly gets.
Thanks.
Okay. Anne?
I wanted to ask if, and this is probably for, I mean, this is for a later conversation, but I'd also like to see us have a discussion about our budget for the use of the 170 million. We've gotten some information already about expenditures that we've had to make and projections, but we haven't seen as a whole where we, where we think and how we think we will use the 170 million. So I know that that's a future activity, but mayor, I would ask that we have an opportunity to have that conversation also with our staff. So we can see as a whole where we're going and what we project our, our needs to be, not, not just after we spend it.
That makes sense as well. Thank you. Any further questions for Bree? Allison, then Mayor Protam, then Councilor Tovoe, then Craig Kesar.
Thank you. Bree, I was wondering if we are tracking any funding from the state? So we have an item on our, our agenda this week where we're getting some money from the state that has not been specifically allocated from specific to coronavirus, but through emergency contract stuff that we have set up. But trying to understand what we're getting from the state.
So I'm going to ask Stephanie Hayden to help me answer this question, if she's still on the line. But what I believe that money comes from is, we're on the third piece of legislation at this point. This piece of legislation was specifically called CARES Act. So when we refer to that, when I say the CARES Act, I'm referring to legislation number three. I believe the funding that public health is putting up on your agenda this week is from one of the prior two pieces of legislation, which didn't have a large allotment for cities, not in the way the CARES Act did. Stephanie, are you on the line to speak more to this item?
I'm sorry, I'm here. Can you repeat the question? I apologize.
So I'm trying to understand for, so we have item 70 on our agenda, which seems to be state money that we're using for COVID. But we didn't, in our, in our presentation, Bree wasn't presenting what we've gotten from the state. And I was trying to understand what we are getting from the state and how that's coming in, but also, you know, using that example from item 70 to help illustrate it.
Stephanie, if you, before you answer, if I could clarify, Councilmember Alter, that we are tracking what we've received from the state. But to your point, we need to coordinate with departments that are on items they're receiving that have come in through the other pieces of legislation. So if there was other significant state resources I, from the CARES Act or through the CARES Act, I would have included that as well. But I'll let Stephanie speak to the item 73.
I think it's item 70.
On the council agenda. Oh, 70, I'm sorry.
Sorry. 70, no, I'm sorry. The 70, 70 is the one that's, is from the CARES Act. There's another one that's from state.
That's right.
Let me see if I can find that one for you. But you can, you can start.
I think it's item 43.
No. Well, maybe if you could just speak to the state funding piece, then I'll find it.
Okay. So I, I, we have, we do have several items on, on the agenda. And Bree covered several of those. The HUD funding through HOPLA is on the agenda, as well as our ESG Emergency Solutions Grant through HUD. And then these dollars that are, that we're getting 1.6 million dollars, those dollars. those dollars, we currently receive funding from the state for this grant. And then, and so we currently receive about $600,000, kind of typically, for our public health emergency preparedness. This is not a part of the CARES Act, as Bree said. This is from, this is COVID-19 coronavirus. I mean, this is Coronavirus Preparedness and Response Supplemental, yes, thank you, Supplemental Appropriations Act. And so, and so basically, with that funding in particular, we are able to increase our coverage for our employees that will be working in that preparedness area. And so what we are finding is, is that some of the money is coming from the CARES Act, and some of the funding is coming from other acts. But the dollars are associated with us providing additional services for COVID-19. So I hope that's helpful.
Yeah, and I found, sorry if I was... Sorry if I was confusing, it was item 73 that has money from DSHS for it. So I was particularly trying to understand about what funding we're getting from the state. It sounds like this might be better either to do offline or in subsequent briefings specifically on that. But let me follow up with this question for Bree or for Director Hayden. What is the state not doing that we need them to be doing? Obviously, we've heard about the testing part, but can you tell us what we need to be advocating for the state to be doing that they're not doing?
I think that that question breaks down into two categories, which you all talk about frequently at these meetings. There's the category about the healthcare COVID response, and that relates to testing, to PPE, to providing those direct resources and assisting with those direct resources in order to manage the public health concern of the COVID response. As to what the state will, the state will receive money through the CARES Act. They will receive a substantial amount of money. There aren't many requirements in the federal legislation for the state to pass through that money. We will be monitoring what they do receive and what they do pass through and what they do not pass through, because they will have opportunities to use that money and decide whether they're going to share that with the cities and counties that are affected, or they can keep it at the state level.
Okay. And then one of the things we've heard from some nonprofits is whether the city might be in a position to help advocate with HUD to ask for a suspension of the 25% match requirement for the nonprofit.
The 25% match requirement. I have Ralph Garbuschian off on the line, and I don't know, Ralph, if you are familiar specifically with that item related to any of the, I believe it's with CDBG?
Hi, Councilmember, hi, Bree. This is Ralph. Yes, HUD is going to, HUD is, under this legislation, for the CARES Act CDBG money, as well as for FY '20 regular CDBG money, HUD is allowed to provide waivers. But so far, we're working on a memo from HUD to each HUD field office. And that doesn't get into a lot of detail, so theoretically, yes, we might be able to get a waiver from that, but that's TBD still.
Okay. So we do have some nonprofits that are in need of that because their fundraising has bottomed out, and so if we can definitely look into that, and you can follow up with my office if you want, sort of specific names of organizations. And then my last question for Bree is, does your Intergovernmental Relations Office have the resources you need right now to do the advocacy that we need at the state and federal level?
We, you know, as you know, I have a really great staff, and I'm very proud of all the work they're doing right now. We did have one position we were about to hire that was going to assist with federal, but we'll follow up through the city management trains on our needs for that. And I will follow up with you, Councilmember Alter, on the nonprofit issue. I think we should communicate that up to the delegation to make sure that they're aware.
I think there's a broader set of issues that the nonprofits have that they would benefit from some advocacy from the city on that we should talk about. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Mayor Pro Tem, Garza, thank you.
I have a lot of questions about that 170 million, but I will take those offline, specifically about, we know, we know that the need is incredibly significant. And when we were building the RISE Fund, we wanted to be very aware of the fact that we only had a certain amount in there to spend. But seeing that number, I think it's great that we have our public health rolling out the first phase, and we'll definitely know then how quickly that gets used, and we'll know additional need then too. So I have questions about the allocation. I know some of that will be responsive to Councilmember Flanagan's resolution as well. So I don't know what the plan is to have a discussion on the allocation of that. But I, maybe that's in our task force meetings that we're having. I know there's one for economic recovery scheduled Friday for the task force that I'm on, but I look forward to that conversation happening as quickly as possible. But more specifically, Bree, it's the Burn JAG, the JAG Burn money. Councilmember Tobo has brought up before how we use funds, you know, restricted funds. We want to, we want to use restricted funds before we dig into our general funds. And it's my understanding that the Burn JAG money is restricted, but there are things in there like, I'm seeing drug treatment, mental health programs. It can fund, it can fund public defense, it can fund reentry. Director Hayden mentioned, although we didn't specifically call out formerly incarcerated individuals in the RISE Fund, we obviously, they would, they would qualify under the 200% poverty line if they met that requirement. So I just want to make sure, it looks like in looking at, majority does go to law enforcement. And of course, we want to make sure our law enforcement is properly protected and has PPE. We can, I'm assuming we buy, we would, we would purchase a big PPE purchase for our entire city, and that could be used, that could be purchased through unrestricted funds, as opposed to if there's an opportunity to use this Burn JAG money for mental health programs, previously incarcerated, reentry programs and drug treatment. I think it's important for us to use those kinds of restricted funds for things we know we will need more funding for, especially during this crisis. So it's not really a question, just more a statement to make sure that we are, if it's restricted, getting the best, you know, bang for our buck, so to speak, if it's restricted, and then being able to use our unrestricted dollars in other ways. That's all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Tobo?
Thank you. I have a few questions that go back to Director Hayden. I didn't have an opportunity to ask those at the time, so I'm not sure if she's on the line and available. And if not, I have some other questions I can start with.
I'm here.
Hi, Director Hayden. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
A couple of quick questions. I know our Social Service Committee will meet this afternoon, and so I'm saving some of the more specific questions for that. But I wonder if you could provide us with an update on the Salvation Army, if you have any estimates on when they may reopen?
Yes. We have started those conversations with them. As you know, they wanted to do a deep clean of the property. And so Vella and I have had discussions internally, because what we want to make sure is, is we want to make sure that the folks that we are sending back have been through that 14-day isolation. And then if they were COVID positive, that they have received their clearance and have retested, and they've tested negative. And so those are things that we are working through right now. And so once we have all of those established, then we will continue conversations with them about their transition to open back up. And that is the plan for them to open back up.
Thank you. And I know that we have two pro lodges, protective lodges, where individuals are able to stay. Some of those, as I understand, are available to our first responders. We've had a couple of questions this week about whether there is any lodging that is available to frontline health employees within the city's inventory. I know that there was an announcement that St. Ed's has opened up their dorms, which is fabulous. Several people who had written to us had suggested dorms would be a great match. So thank you to St. Ed's for taking that step. I'm not sure whether they're, how, in both of those cases, frontline health employees can access that kind of housing.
Okay. So as you are aware, we do have our isolation facility, which, you know, frontline workers can also access that facility as well. But also, what we, in our conversations with some of the medical providers, the hospitals, if some of their employees have voiced to them that they would prefer to stay at a hotel and not return home, they have, they are providing that as a service for their employees through the hospital facility. We are just asking, you know, that if, you know, if folks have those questions or concerns, we are asking them just to, you know, to reach out to us. And then, you know, we'd be glad, we will gladly follow up with them.
Thank you. So if we have heard from individuals who are trying to access that kind of housing, to whom should we direct them? Should we direct them to Public Health, and do you want to follow up with us on who that is? Or is it something, is the request really intended to come from their place of employment?
Well, most people are following up, you know, as individuals. So what we'll do is, is we will definitely get you the contact information, so an email, so you can follow up, I mean, you can send them, send your constituents to that email or that phone number. So we will, we will provide that on the...
Great. Thank you. And do you have any more information than we, than was in the meeting about the St. Ed's dorms and how those can be accessed? Is that directly through St. Ed's, or is that also in partnership with Austin Public Health?
So currently, Austin Public Health is not partnering with St. Ed's. They reached out to us early on, and the Office of Real Estate followed up with them. They were requesting, they wanted us to, they wanted us to enter into a lease agreement with them for some of their dorms, as well as, or their apartments that are vacant right now. And so the Office of Real Estate held those conversations with them. And I'm not sure if Alex is on the line. He could go into that...
And I may have said, I think I may have said St. Edward's, I believe it's Concordia. And I apologize that I, my sound on my computer went out at some point. So I missed a portion of your answer, but I think you said that you had more information from somebody else online.
Hey, Stephanie, this is Alex, Alex Gale with the Office of Real Estate. I was just going to say, yes, Councilmember Tobo, it is Concordia. And I have reached out to them to see how we can coordinate with them, but that isn't something that we had set up or Public Health set up with Concordia.
Thank you. And Mr. Gale, you may be able, am I echoing, by the way, in my questions?
No.
Okay. Good. So we're in the process of purchasing the roadway end. Can you give us an update on whether or not that has, that sale has gone through? And if so, whether that might, how long the renovation would be, and whether that would also become an option for individuals for either isolation housing or other kinds of needs during this immediate period?
Yes, we actually have closed on the facility as of last Thursday, the 16th, I believe it was. We anticipate the mold mitigation being completed by mid-May. May 15th is when that's scheduled to, excuse me, to be completed. At that point, you know, as we get closer to that point, we do, you know, we have been talking with Vella, Public Health, and Rosie at Neighborhood Housing on what, how we utilize that. It most certainly could be available as a response to COVID-19 if we anticipate still needing that space by then.
Thank you. And so the mold mitigation is the only major piece of renovation happening to the roadway end?
At this point, that's what needs to be completed in order for it to be inhabited. We do, in order to use it as permanent supportive housing, there's some additional renovations that will need to be completed. But what we wanted to do is at least do the mold mitigation so that if we do need it in response to this COVID-19, we can complete that and have it available.
That's terrific. Thank you. I have a question, a completely different subject now, about the family business loan program. As we're starting to hear about individuals who have been able to receive funding through the federal government, there are concerns that a lot of that funding is going to larger businesses rather than smaller ones. And I had a question for the staff, it's really for our economic development staff, and I'm not sure whether they're on the line or not. Our program that we approved two meetings ago was designed with the same criteria, as I understand it, and applicants needed to be applying for those federal programs. And so are we contemplating, and I would suggest that at least we have that conversation, are we contemplating adjusting the local criteria so that they are more competitive for some of our smaller businesses who really need the, really need the funding and may not be successful at the federal level?
Yes, Councilmember Tobo, can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
So Melvia Hope Rab, we can definitely circle back with your office on the current guidelines of our program to ensure that we are definitely focused on our local businesses.
Well, the rest of us would like to know that, too.
Yes, we will provide those details to the entire council.
That'd be great. I mean, in particular, I know the small businesses had to have applied for the EIDL loans, and I'm not sure whether they needed to be successful in that application to receive local funding. But again, I would, I would say just, I don't, I don't have a sense, an in-depth sense of how our local businesses, they're just anecdotal information that some of, you know, again, what we're seeing nationally is that some larger businesses may have been more successful in those applications than some of our smaller businesses. And if so, then I would want to make sure that we're investing our local dollars to support those local businesses who may not have been successful in the federal competition. So I will, I will, and I know that the Economic Development Committee, I think, is meeting tomorrow, but I do think that's a, something that the, if policy changes are necessary to provide that support through our local programs, then I hope, I hope we'll be teed up to do that as soon as possible. And then lastly, just to circle back to something we talked about long ago in this conversation with regard to talking as a council about how and when and what those triggers would look like for reopening. look like for reopening Austin, I I would just add a request that if possible, it would be great to hear, as I mentioned when Dr. Esq. was talking, it'd be great to hear from some of the individuals who are actually doing those, that modeling, if that's possible, or at least to have some time within that conversation to really look at and explore those models as a group.
I think that'd be really helpful, and 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 Dr. Myers has made that off.
Wonderful, that's terrific. Thank you, that's my last question for the moment.
Okay. Uh, Greg?
I just want to make a quick note, just based on what I've heard mentioned by so many council members. This is for the manager and for our staff listening in. I think there's a lot of interest and urgency around the SCARES Act allocation, and I think it's good that we're split up into cabinets in order to work quickly, but given that multiple of these cabinets overlap with the work, it's also important for us to be able to talk to the, about this as a group, but when we all work together as a large group, in this kind of setting, we also go slow. So I just want to urge the manager to help us strike that balance of both getting a lot of quick work done in these cabinets, coordinating amongst us, and then for us to have some transparency here with the bigger group, because we have deadlines from the federal government on when these funds have to get allocated, we have urgent need happening now, and so we have to find some way to coordinate what we're doing.
Greg, you froze and then disappeared. We've lost you, Greg. But I think to his point Try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I think I maybe made my point and you were gonna restate it.
I think Managerie makes a good point. I think that if there's a way to take the the cabinet conversations to report back onto the message board, so that there's an easy way for everyone else on the council to be able to comment or weigh into those conversations, maybe for each one of those panels might be a good idea. Um, in addition to, um, any desire to have a special session or direct work session, we'd have the the cabinets also report back to the to the council, we should do on work sessions. Okay, I think that, uh, Councilmember Harper-Madison was next.
Yes, thank you, Mary Adler, much like Councilmember Tovo, I had some questions for Director Hayden that I didn't get to ask earlier.
You can ask it now.
I was just waiting for Director Hayden to come back on the line.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Hi there, thank you. Um, so a couple of questions. Um, I've had some folks ask me, and I have, I haven't been able to answer substantively to date. Um, logistically, what does it look like?
We've lost your sound. Mathias, I can't hear you.
Muted, I don't know what to do.
Now we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay. Um, did you, Director Hayden, did you hear the question?
No, ma'am, I didn't.
Oh, so the question was, I'm, I'm, I've had some constituents reach out just asking, logistically, what does it look like? What is the process look like? So let's say you have the appropriate symptoms to receive a test, you get tested, you found positive, what do next steps look like?
Um, after they, after they test, um, positive, um, our staff will, will receive those results. So whether they go to their private physician's office, or if they go through our our point of testing, or even if they go through one of the community care sites, all of those results are coming in to Austin Public Health. Now, we, we have, um, um, split up the the contact tracing as of of last week. So, community care, we are, um, we're contacting the the patient initially just to let them know that they are positive, and, um, we are going over the orders for them to quarantine. And, um, and then from there, you know, we go over those orders verbally, and then we mail them the orders. Now, unfortunately, we still, um, we're working with the state to make a change to us having to mail the orders, but right now, that is still the state, that's still in state statute. Um, after they have, um, you know, received that information from us, then the contact tracing folks will start working with them and having those conversations. So if they, if they took their test at, through UT Dell, UT Dell is helping us with contact tracing. If they took their test at Community Care, um, Community Care is doing their contact tracing. And so all of the, all of the rest of the the tests, um, that were, you know, at various locations, Austin Public Health staff are doing that contact tracing and doing those investigative interviews to determine, um, you know, basically the the universe for them. And then, um, our staff are leaving their contact information if they need to follow up and have any questions. We are providing, um, that follow-up information, that follow-up, that way for them to follow up with us.
Okay, so that answers most of that question, but it also raises some concerns for me, and I think this is what we were trying to get at. Um, so folks who, um, who otherwise have a difficult time caring for themselves, if they should find themselves under isolation orders because they have been tested positive, I'm just trying to figure out, do we have a system for, um, like, uh, like, community health workers, people that can check on them, make sure they have food and water and um, help with temperature checks or whatever else needs to happen in the interim? Just thinking, you know, if you, if you have a family that can help support you when you're ill, um, then you're probably okay, but what about people who don't have that resource? Do we have a system in place, or are we working towards having a a system in place? Kind of like, you know, when we, when Africa addressed the Ebola outbreak, you know, they had community health workers that took on a lot of those roles, you know, they mobilized, trained, and hired folks that they were able to deploy in the community to be doing that on the ground, sort of, you know, health needs assessment? Um, but I'm thinking something more along the lines for, since you have the data for people who have tested positive, do we have a system, or are we gonna create a system that checks on those folks?
So currently, um, as a part of the assessment that the, um, uh, that the, the questionnaire that's a part of the initial conversation with that person that reaches out to determine if they're positive, um, they are asking them a series of questions. And so based upon those responses, we, um, early on, we embedded, um, our our social workers, um, and some case managers, and those case managers are following up with those individuals as they need, um, basic needs assistance. So if they, you know, if they need food, or if they need, um, you know, I mean, access to really pretty much anything, they are reaching out to them and having those conversations, and then they're coordinating for them to, uh, get their needs met. So that's been a part of the response early on throughout Department Operations Center. In addition to that, um, that's why we stood up our social services arm, uh, because as the response really, really started to grow, um, we wanted to make sure to coordinate and collaborate with our, um, nonprofit partners to be able to provide some level of assistance.
I appreciate that, that's very helpful. Um, the other question I had was about, um, sorry about that. Uh, well, I wanted to echo, um, Councilmember Alter's concerns about, um, opening businesses. So I don't know that this one is for you so much as it might be for, um, our city manager, maybe even the mayor could field this one. Um, I, I receive photographs every single day of people who are out in the community. Um, the, the one that I receive the most photographs from is Home Depot. Um, so employees not minding the mask order requirement, and customers also not minding the mask order requirement. Um, like I said, that's the one I receive the most from, but I receive it, I'm receiving photos, our office is receiving photos from all kinds of retail establishments. So to echo, um, uh, my colleagues' concerns, if we don't already have things tight, if we don't already have a handle on them, I am concerned about any additional openings. I don't feel like we have a comprehensive system that's working yet, and it would seem to me that we'd need to get our current system working effectively and efficiently before we add to that load. Um, so just wanted to flag that as a concern. Um, and then, uh, also along the lines of something Councilmember Alter said earlier. Uh, first, I'd like to thank, um, Assistant City Manager Shorter and, um, Director McNeely from PARD for all the questions that they've had to answer from me in the last couple of weeks consecutively, but I will just one more time flag my substantial concern about the, what they call the hotspot parks, um, especially for District One, we're talking about Givens Park, um, is is the one where we are really just experiencing the most in the way of challenges. Um, and so, uh, I, I know I heard, uh, ACM Shorter talk about limiting vehicular access, um, and I just really think that could make all the difference for Givens Park. If people weren't able to park their cars in there, I think we could, um, remove some of the risk for people congregating, which is a daily and dozens and dozens of people activity, not minding social distancing or protective equipment at all. Um, so just flagging that as a major concern I have, um, and I will continue to try to work with ACM Shorter and Director McNeely to try to find some sort of solution, but in recognizing, um, one, that we as a municipality haven't done what we need to, and informing high-risk communities, um, African-American communities, Latinx communities, and, um, low-income communities need to know that statistically speaking, you know, from the nationwide perspective, they will have disproportionately high fatal outcomes if they contract COVID-19. I think we really need to have a more robust system for communicating that to at-risk communities. Um, and a part of that, you know, should be some really substantial, I know there's some community groups that will talk to Givens this weekend, but it shouldn't be on the part of volunteer community organizations to do the work that the city should be doing to communicate these important messages to populations that are at high risk. Um, uh, and then lastly, uh, I'd like to ask, um, I heard about, um, some of the sheltering options, um, and not to harp on it, but, you know, considering that Airbnb is working with their host to cover the cost of administrative fees, um, if if a host opts to host a first responder or frontline worker for free, they have the opportunity to do that with Airbnb picking up the administrative cost. So I just want to make sure that we're not at any point ruling that out as a viable option for housing people comfortably if they need to isolate. And I think that was about it, thank you.
Three really good questions, I'll let Stephanie address the 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 last one about the first responders and and either she or or Assistant City Manager Shorter on the parks. And I appreciate the work that you have done on that, especially with respect to Givens. With respect to the first question, uh, the concern you have about opening up the city and undoing the work that we have, uh, is something that, uh, I think all of us share. Uh, I'm gonna figure out and give the council options for us to have a conversation together as a group on those issues. I'll also initiate something on the message board, uh, so that there's an opportunity for you to see, uh, what's happening in that, and give you the opportunity to be able to comment on it and help direct that, uh, the the entire, uh, council on that issue, uh, because I think that it it's, it is a really important issue for us to discuss collectively and for our community to discuss. I have significant concerns, um, and as part of that, we'll make sure that, um, you have available to you the folks that are doing the modeling, uh, as well as, um, Dr. Esq. Uh, uh, and, uh, Director Hayden, the others that are participating in 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 talking through the the risk variables, not only what we do, but when we do it relative to where we are on slopes and curves, plateaus and valleys. Uh, Director Hayden, do you want to address the, um, uh, issue with respect to, uh, the other two questions? Oh, on the enforcement issue, uh, that you raised, it's a really hard thing to do. We don't have enough police officers and sheriffs to accurately police this. In the order that we listed, we spoke to that. Uh, but if we don't get the widespread adoption, which we ultimately need, we're going to have to, uh, to figure out how to better.
If I can respond to that real quick, you know, an idea that has occurred to me is, if we could hold retailers accountable for making certain that their patrons follow the city's orders, um, I think that would be a good way to partner with, um, with retailers locally, um, and have them take that into consideration as a way that they can help us help the municipality. And then I just remembered my other question, I don't know if it's for you or Director Hayden, but it's around, um, what efforts we're deploying for incarcerated people. Um, and, you know, I know we're putting a lot of focus and attention on elderly care facilities and nursing homes. I just wanted to know whether or not we have a similarly robust system in place for, um, our jails.
Oh, Councilmember, this is Chris Shorter. I wanted to jump in before Director Hayden, just to answer the, quickly sort of respond to the question around parks, uh, and our park system, want to start by just thanking all of you, uh, and certainly Councilmember Harper-Madison for your leadership around this. We are, uh, doing our very best to strike the balance of providing recreational opportunities for our residents, uh, while also keeping in mind the need for social distancing. Um, and so ultimately, the closure of some of the parking lots and spaces, uh, the, uh, in the case of, for example, the trail, the Butler Trail making it a one-way trail, uh, the signage, uh, the work that our park rangers are doing, uh, to educate, all of these things, uh, we will continue to do, uh, and will con, and will continue to be available for additional ideas, new suggestions as we go forward. Uh, but limiting, um, or closing parks at this point, um, would be a very difficult call, especially in areas where there aren't many other avenues for folks to get out of their home and in a safe way, uh, distance themselves or recreate. Uh, so I, I, I want to just, like you suggested, continue to work with your office, uh, to make sure that we are being responsive, uh, while also providing the community, um, wha, what is core to our mission, of an opportunity to recreate outdoors.
Uh, thank you, ACM Shorter, I appreciate that, and I'll just echo it, not to belabor it, but I'll just echo, if people cannot park 50 cars at Givens, they will not unsafely congregate. Folks that are walking in are the ones that are hanging about way too close to one another, not respecting base coverings or social distancing.
Okay. Councilmember Harper-Madison, did you get the answers to questions you wanted? Do you want, uh, Director Hayden to address something?
I, I, I think you were, bless you, baby, I think you were deferring to Director Hayden about, um, the STRs for first responders and frontline workers.
Um, absolutely, um, we are considering all options, including Airbnb. Um, what we are requesting is, is, um, and we will provide this in the, um, in the Q and A response, is that we are, um, in order for us to just make sure we're not duplicating efforts, um, we're wanting folks to go through the ELC, um, through our logistics in order to coordinate assistance if individual employer is not able to provide lodging, because quite a few of the, um, employers are providing that lodging to their employees. So, so we will, um, provide that, um, that ELC mailbox for you all, um, in the Q and A. So, so we will um, provide that um, that ELC mailbox for you all um, in the Q and A.
And this is Alex Gill with the Office of Real Estate Services. Just to add to that, Director Hayden, um, we, we have gotten uh, some agreements with four other hotels to provide reduced rates. Uh, that information has been provided to the city departments to share with their employees, to basically uh, filter that down to those city employee frontline workers and first responder departments. So EMS, APD, AFD, Austin Energy, Austin Water, uh, for those individuals that are working those extended shifts. Uh, those departments have that information to share with their employees if they have that needed uh, stay, to stay at one of those uh, four hotels uh, in and around the city.
Um, the last thing I would like to um, address is, um, Councilmember Harper-Madison, you had a question about the jails. Um, our staff have been um, working very closely with the jails um, prior to this. And, and, and we've increased that uh, though, the, the conversations and meetings with them. Our surveillance nurse um, has um, been working very closely with them to coordinate testing for the, for the inmates, as well as the isolation um, strategy. And then um, the Travis County Sheriff's Department has a representative that has been um, working out of the Emergency Operations Command site. And um, that way, that kind of gives them that full access to all of the staff that are um, you know, working on the different, um, whether they're medical operations or public health staff. And so we have been um, coordinating and collaborating with them during this time. As they have um, started to reduce their census, they were providing that information to us about reducing their census during this time. And then um, we are also uh, coordinating with Travis County um, um, through Roger Jeffrey and um, having conversations with him as other things come up for um, folks that are in, in, in the jail system.
I'm sorry, Director Hayden, you said reducing. I didn't hear the second word.
So as, as they have, um, you know, as you know, the department started our response to this effort in January. And um, as they have been continuing to communicate with us, as they have been um, reducing the number of people, and you know, that's really a, a Travis County um, um, effort that they're, have been, you know, collaborating to reduce the, the census. But as they, um, they consult with our surveillance nurse, because if they have questions about the social distancing, and they give us the example, you know, we have, you know, twelve hundred people that are, um, you know, that are in jail, and she can provide some technical assistance to them about social distancing and isolation, and even um, the cleaning and the testing. And so that has been happening during this entire response.
I appreciate that. And you answered my question when you were saying the, the reduction is in the, is in the incarcerated population. Um, and so I, the one last question I would have around that, that subject matter would be, um, is there, during the course of these conversations, is there an emergency medical management strategy in place? Which I can imagine is very complicated. Um, uh, is there a system in place for mass isolation? Should we become like some of the other, um, some of the other states are struggling with um, with clusters within the prison population, within the jail populations? Do we have a plan for how we isolate folks? How do we house folks um, under those circumstances? I'm not asking you to lay it out for me now. I just hope that that's a conversation that's being had.
Great. Thank you.
I will, I will confirm that with my surveillance nurse about their plans for that.
Thank you, Director Hayden.
Councilmember Alter, while, while we have these folks here, do you want to raise your question on the real estate, this item sixty-eight, I think?
Sure. And, and I think we've covered sort of a little